For July 25th, um, to order at 7:01 and if you can all join the Peleas. Thank you. Welcome.
Commissioner Sharam.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Chad President, Commissioner Colbertson.
Present. All right. Then, um, move, um, the adoption of the agenda and I just want to make, um, one comment and we have a hard stop at nine this evening and we lose quorum. So we're going to try and keep things rolling, but also we do discuss. All right. Um, so when, um, there, um, I move the adoption of the agenda. All right. And is there a second?
I didn't see.
Okay. Rooted by Commissioner Moore, uh, seconded by Commissioner Sharma. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then, uh, we'll move to opening public comment. And we have no public hearings, uh, tonight. So if anyone has any public comment for, uh, to address the planning commission, if you could please come forward and sign your name, we'll deal with folks that are here first and then, um, go to the folks online. Welcome.
Hey there. Daryl DePastor, Syo Township resident. Sorry, I was like two, two agenda items that I wanted to address. One is the Morrison Hills agenda item. I just wanted to, I give a plug for, for Mav, the M A V D. Uh, I currently live in Bridgewood Hills, which is a Mav development. They're planning on a second development with six adjacent houses. That's on the agenda for tonight. Just want to say overall Mav's been a great developer. So like I've bought residential property from them, worked with them. They basically had control of the, the HOA up until recently. Now that we, the HOA has a, you know, majority ownership. Um, but I'm in favor of, of, of the development. I think, um, they've been a responsible developer and they've been easy to work with. Um, having said that, I know there were some comments about extending the cul-de-sac through Bridgewood Hills, uh, current road. Um, I don't think that's a good idea. I think there's some limitations to that for the current residents that live there. It's also a private road that's owned by the HOA. It's no longer under development of developer control. So that would pose some, some challenges. Let's just say that. Um, otherwise I think that they'll do a good job of minimizing the impact to the current, uh, landscape that's back there. Uh, and the second agenda item I wanted to address was the Heron Farms. Um, I know these comments have been, you know, circulated, uh, but I just want to get into the public record. One, I'd like to hear some on the discussion end tonight, some serious discussion around just enforcement, right? I think, um, you know, in discussions with the Herons, I think in good faith, they've, um, you know, come up with some, some conditions. Um, but I would like to hear more about enforcement. I have some questions around the owners residing on site and, um, the fact that Heron Farms or whatever business they have is an LLC. So how does that work? Cause LLCs are members, they're not individuals. And so who is the actual owner who has to live on site when it's under an LLC? So I'd like to have clarification on that. Um, and then how does that change as the LLC changes membership? Right? Or majority membership or et cetera. Um, I would like to hear from the sheriff in terms of sound enforcement. I know we have this whole inaudible thing. I know the sheriff doesn't record every time they come out on a call. It's typically only if they actually issue a citation. So how would that be handled? Um, I'd like to hear some discussion around that. And, um, it, I can't find the special events ordinance in the Muni code. So is there currently not one there? So that's problematic for me. I know there's one you can find online from 2014, but I, and I, I know there was a drafted one, cause I saw it at one of these planning commissions, maybe a year and a half ago. I would love to just read through it just to understand it, I guess. Cause there's, it's noted in the conditions that there's possibly two events on, outside of the conditions that would fall into special events. Potentially open to that, but I'd like to know sort of what that looks like, what that entails. So it'd be nice to have that approved if it's in the current draft form. I think that's it. Like I said, at the end of the day, you know, would I rather not have this? Yeah. But I also respect sort of landowners' rights to be able to do what they want. Um, my ultimate hope is that nobody's impacted by this negatively. Um, and then I would just ask, as you consider voting on this, just consider at the end of the day, no disrespect to the Herons, is this something that you would want in your backyard? Okay? So I think at the end of the day, a lot of it is on the township around enforcement. Okay? I think again, the Herons have, have negotiated in good faith on some conditions, but it still comes down to enforcement at the end of the day. Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, present that wants to address the, uh, planning commission? I see no one in person. We'll go online.
Mr. Rob Pattinson has his hand up. Uh, Mr. Pattinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for answering part of my question, uh, in the previous meeting. Um, during that discussion, we now find out that there have been multiple Z O A meetings for 2022. So I'd like to find out and be more specific in my question. How many Z O A meetings have there been in 2022? And, uh, what are the dates of those meetings? As you know, I attend all the meetings and record them for the community YouTube channel. And I have never seen a Z O A announcement. Uh, there's never been an agenda posted. Um, and, uh, there's never been any minutes posted. So, um, I'm quite concerned about that and the OMA issues that that raises. And then last year I said that Syo Township has absolutely no business issuing, um, party barn, because until, until Syo Township has an ordinance with teeth in it that's enforceable, Syo Township has no business issuing, uh, permits for party barn businesses. You have the fruit tigs down on Syo Church who have been tormenting their neighbors for 13 years. And those neighbors have come to the planning commission and to the board of trustees begging for help and less far there hasn't been any. So I would put it at the top of your priority list that Syo Township needs enforceable ordinances that can bring uncooperative businesses into compliance. And until you have that, no matter how good the Heron's proposal is, you can't go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ann Streeter. Ann Streeter, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Ann Streeter. I live at 7869 Syo Church Road. And I want to comment about the Heron Farms, uh, proposal that you're putting forth in front of you. I, along with, um, I agree with what Rob says is, um, how can you even approve this when you haven't gotten the base, uh, enforcement done for the two party barns across the road from us? Um, we're right in the middle of them and the monitoring, the enforcement from Syo Township is really hard. We called the sheriff. They can't come out for two hours or they can't come out period because they're either too busy or they don't have enough staff. Um, so we can't even do a complaint. So if you don't see any complaints, that's probably a good reason. Um, there has been complaints, but we, you know, can't do a formal complaint. Um, another thing is on your proposal, there's a part that talks about like arbitration or dispute resolution. I disagree with that. I think that is putting the onus on, on the shoulders of the neighbors that are existing around there. That should be struck out totally. This is Syo Township's decision to either allow it or not allow it. And if you're going to allow this kind of thing happening in your township, then you should, uh, follow through with everything, with enforcement, monitoring, everything, and not put it on the neighbors. That is unfair. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. We have Paula G, I believe. Uh, Paula G, you have the floor. Paula G, you're still muted. All right. Back to Paula. You have another hand up. Michelle Cody. Uh, Michelle, you have.
Thank you. Michelle Cody, 4620 Stein Road. And I've been a Syo Township resident since 1988. And I live in a very, what I consider blessed area because most of it has been already donated to land preservation. And, um, I feel so fortunate and I live near the Zee Farm and it's beautiful here. And I was unaware that the Baker Road corridor was going to be, uh, considered a, uh, district of, a gateway district, uh, into Dexter and so on, meaning more development. And I, uh, definitely am a fan of the two and a half acre minimum. Um, I have more than that and I'm grateful for it. I also agree with Mr. Patterson and the prior speakers, um, supporting their, uh, enforcement of ordinances and, um, some guidelines because part of the reason this whole area is so beautiful is the rural nature of it. And I can speak for my neighbors and myself, we're all here because of the rural nature of the environment. And not all of us are wealthy enough to buy 50, 100, whatever acreage. However, we want it preserved and I feel grateful that some people have done so around me. Big picture, I would, I'm speaking on behalf of less development, not more. And I thought the Jackson Road corridor was going to be it. And then the rest of it was going to remain beautiful. And affordability, I understand. However, it does cost money to have land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to try Paula G in one more time. Paula, you have the floor. Uh, you still showing up as muted.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe, maybe my first comments weren't recorded. Hello?
Yeah, we did not hear you all the first time.
Oh, okay. So the first time is, I'm just saying, when you say arbitration, uh, whether it's Abre Groves and those people having the increased density and what should really stay a wetland, uh, it costs money for the residents to, to hire attorneys, whether it's the, I don't, and I know we don't like the farm business, whatever, the, though, that, that has been going on for years and years. And it puts the onus, when you get all the planning commission and the board trustees, okay, all these changes for people to fight, uh, the, because of the lack of enforcement. So I agree with Rob Patterson that, you know, that, you know, you put in the cart, you wear the horse, you don't have an ordinance and you don't have enforcement. So no matter how great the Heron's proposal is, uh, it's not good. And I understand about affordable housing because even though the Heron rookery is being saved down there at the other thing, other development, that was supposed to be affordable housing for the elderly and it really isn't going to turn out to be that way. I think we all know that, even though they put an elevator in. And that's it. I just think that when, when officials make these rules and then let, and leave the residents to have to fight for enforcement and rules, and maybe they don't have deep pockets, the same thing with the railroad sad. So anyway, I know people have good intentions, but you don't have an ordinance and it's not enforceable. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to? Unless you have somebody from?
No other hands up.
Another person in person would like to make a comment?
I skipped my brand again. Um, I have some comments from the previous discussion about the P U D language. Um, uh, Mr. Luhan, you said that, uh, sometime in the past, and I don't think you said how long ago, there was a property that was non-conforming where four houses were built in it. Um, can you share with us how long ago that was? And can you share with us how many properties are in that situation? The reason I'm asking is if you are advocating use of a P U, P U D process for something that is completely an exception, um, I, I wouldn't understand why that would be the reasoning. If this property, it sounded like you said it was a few decades ago. Have we had any since then?
It's been, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. And this is really the public hearing for Heron Farms. So if you.
Actually, it was a public comment.
Oh, this is still public.
Yeah. We're a public comment.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's still a public comment. Um, so if you could get that information, I think it would be beneficial to the public and the commission. Um, also regarding that language, when we talk about public benefit, I don't think it's at all defined. Um, who is the public? Is it Syo citizens? Is it the residents of the P U D property? Um, I've always wondered that, um, in some cases, I don't think Syo residents get the benefit that it, it strictly goes with the property, which then strictly goes with the developer, the HOA and the people that live in their property. If those lands are not opened up, uh, for example, open space. Um, and then, uh, there was a comment, there was notation in there regarding trees, landmark trees, and there was a phrase about trees, um, saving them where possible. And I thought that was the language that was very loosey goosey that who determines what is, who defines where possible that, that trees can be either taken or left. And then, um, I do want to talk about, uh, Heron Farms, so the whole concept of party barn, special events ordinance. Uh, my question is, I'm reading the Heron's business plan and they do not expect to have positive cash flow until 2025. So the question is, what is the rush in approving a conditional use in the year 2020? Why, why would this commit, commission be pressured by a landowner to do something that they don't expect to even have benefit from for the next three years? So I asked the commission, what is the rush in approving this? They've just planted grapes. Their business plan says that they don't expect to have positive cash flow until 2025. Another thing that I'd like to point out from the business plan on page 50 of their business plan, which is titled Business Plan 2020. The last paragraph on page 50 says, while we would consider leaving the vineyard and winery to our five children to continue to maintain and develop, there has not been an interest shown or expressed as of yet. We feel we would have the option to sell our option, operation fairly quickly with our prime location when the time comes. I find that statement a little bit revealing, a little bit alarming. Um, the property owner is asking for conditional use three years before they need it. They state that they would like to have the option to sell fairly quickly. So what is, what is the purpose of conditional use? Is it to sell the property or is it to have this legacy of a winery with their family for decades to come? I, I think that that's questionable. That's all I have to say.
Uh, we have Doug McEwen. I think that's how you pronounce that. Uh, Mr. McEwen.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, hopefully you can hear me. I am Doug McEwen from 6817 Bridgewood Hills. And I just wanted to comment on, uh, my concern for some of the, I guess, enforcement of, um, the, the Heron Farms proposal. I think, you know, there was a, a good effort made to put in some criteria to say, hey, this is acceptable, this is not. But, you know, as, uh, that would be going in my backyard, I certainly have concerns around, you know, who's going to be counting the number of people there? Um, how are we taking these noise measurements? It just seems like, again, it's a lot of burden on the residents and, you know, if it's not in your backyard, you might not be worried about it. But, uh, since it is in my backyard, I'm worried about it. And I don't think there is a, um, it, it doesn't give me confidence that this will be enforced properly. So that's all.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Commissioner Button Hyde. Who would like to, uh, speak to us? Mr. Hyde is a member of the public. Uh, you now have the floor.
You're still muted, Bud.
It's sort of, sounds like you have a bad connection. I'm not sure if you can hear us. Maybe if you called in on a phone? Yeah, I, I think there's some diff, I think we're having some technical difficulties. This is what happened when we tried to.
Yeah. Um, so I do want to, um, express that people who, if you can't get unmuted or you have a technical difficulty, you can still email planning commission, um, and it'll go into the record. All right.
Okay. Looking at the list here, we actually have 27 attendees online, just for everyone's information. Um, and I see no additional hands up.
Okay. I will, um, entertain a motion to close the public comment. So moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Sharma. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Then we're closing, um, the public comment at 7:25. And, um, communications correspondence, we did get, um, a letter from, um, Margaret Engel. Uh, were there any other communications?
I think Commissioner Hyde sent us something from a neighbor. Maybe that was Engel's letter.
Yeah, that's, that was, um, Margaret Engel's letter. Right? Um, then, um, we have no public hearings, no new business. Um, then, uh, we'll start with Heron Farms. And, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, do we, Doug, do you want to start or we'll start with the Herons? Okay. Welcome.
Bye. I'm in the hot seat. I have just a couple of photos to share if, if I could be made a co-presenter.
I just did, it might take a second.
Perfect. It's coming through now. Okay. Now let's take the screen share. Here we go. At least I don't have to ask if you can hear me like in normal meetings. Okay. So we just have a very, very quick update. Um, we appreciate everybody's time. So since the March planning commission meeting, by the way, the March was our two-year anniversary on, uh, this application. So to the question of, um, 2025 is so far away. It's actually, uh, almost August of 2022. So we're, we're kind of moving along, uh, you know, through this process. We still have, um, trustee board, zoning permits, all sorts of other things that have to occur. But just a quick update here. So since the last meeting, we had a working committee with three of the nearest neighbors, two planning commissioners, two township trustees, um, one consultant and one attorney all together, uh, on a total of six meetings that were held between March and now. Uh, through those meetings, a series of conditions were discussed, um, and I would say negotiated to some extent between us and our neighbors and the township, although we understand you have the final say. Um, we obviously conceded on a lot of things to try to build consensus and work, you know, with our neighbors. Uh, that created five drafts. Uh, the final of the five drafts was circulated to Township Legal, Jim Fink and CWA. And from that, I believe the final, final draft is in your inbox, um, in terms of what was recommended to you. Um, so that's sort of the working, working committee process. And then on the farming activity, I've got a few photos. The vineyard has been planted. The trellises are in, the grow tubes are in, underground irrigation is in place now for the drip system. A deer fence taller than me is in, um, and crops are growing successfully and, and most cases of all the grow tubes, which are, I'll tell you about, they about two feet. So.
The grow tubes.
Yeah. Uh, and then just other activities that have occurred on site is we always have our Fourth of July. It's permitted through the township with, um, commercial fireworks. And, um, you know, it's an opportunity for us to gather with the neighbors and the community. And, um, I, I'll just sort of show a little bit, but we, we took the opportunity to bring a band out, outside with amplified music because we felt like this would be a good opportunity to just see, well, how bad could it be? So we had permission to do this. Um, and I drove to the neighbors surrounding properties. Could you hear it a little bit? I don't know, Daryl, what do you think?
We could hear it. You could hear it, but I mean, you know, for the spirit of the day and the event, that's not a big deal. If it was every night or every weekend, it might be a problem, but once a year, not a big deal.
Thank you. And, and that was outdoor live amplified music. So we just wanted to see like what is in the realm of possible. Um, and, um, so here's just a few photos. Uh, the trellis is going in. And the planting occurring on site. I don't know if this is going to work. It's a time lapse of, uh, skid steer and the plantings and sort of everything occurring, um, out on the farm. I won't play the whole video. Uh, but you know, it's, it's in now. And then let's just see a couple of photos just of the Fourth of July to give you sort of a sample size for, um, the size of it. We had, we think about 500 people just in the country market parking lot watching and then several hundred more on site with the music. So this was just what would happen, right? I mean, it's Fourth of July, it's fireworks, so it can't be louder than those. So it was just kind of an interesting experiment for us to see. Uh, all the neighbors were invited, they always are. Um, so that's just kind of our wrap from then until now. We really appreciate your consideration. We really want to work with the township and the neighbors. Um, we have owned the property since 2015. Um, I heard the comment about us wanting to sell. I, I hope people can recognize that if we were profiteering on this, probably a vineyard wouldn't be the best use of 70 acres that outlines the Dexter, Dexter city border. Um, but we love it there. So, and, um, you know, we want to stay.
Thank you.
I'm just, I don't have a lot, a lot to, um, I don't have a lot to, to really add to that. I mean, the applicant hasn't provided any new site plan information. The plan information that you guys received, you know, some months ago is, is, is still the plan. What's been worked on since the last time we, uh, we were all together was mentioned by Mr. Heron and that is, um, a list of potential conditions. And that's if you didn't get them sent to you, most of you got those there on your desk here today. So there's a paper copy in front of you. These were the conditions put into a format that looks like an actual, this is what the conditional use permit would actually look like. Um, don't let that scare you. I put it in this format just so everybody could see what it's going to look like. This could change between the planning commission and township report. I just wanted to put it into that.
I just wanted to put it into that final format so everyone could get a look at what this would actually look like if it was approved. And, you know, there are a series of 11, 14 conditions that have been added to this proposal. I don't know if you want me to go over those, Jan, what those conditions are. But do you want me to briefly go over them?
Well, I just didn't say that the conditions are growing since my last meeting with the neighbors and the Herons. Like, I mean, whatever you think.
Yeah. You know, maybe I will kind of briefly go over these because I'm sure there's a lot of folks in the audience that, of course, can have the benefit of sitting in these committee meetings with us. So the first is to develop a telephone complaint hotline. There's more to it than that, but it's supposed to be available to the residents. And that would be direct phone to someone on the Heron's property. So if there's complaints, the idea would be they could address them returnally before you had to file a complaint. The second is that to receive final zoning compliance for the operation of the wine tasting room, the applicant would have to demonstrate to the township zoning administrator that the grapes have been planted and that a first harvest of grapes has occurred. If that occurs, the zoning administrator would provide written verification to the township board. This condition's been addressed. So that not only the grapes have been planted, but they have to have, you know, the first harvest of their grapes. The third condition is that wine tasting room shall be accessory to the onsite farm and winery. Each event in the tasting room must have at least 50% revenue related to the sale of wine products on site. This is something that the applicant, so a lot of the questions that we hear is how do we verify this? I think we, you know, we learned a few lessons with Misty Valley Misty Farm and that the conditions that are placed here are more verifiable and more specific than almost anything we have with Misty Valley Misty Farm project. So the first is that 50% of the revenue is from wines provided on site. The applicant is to verify that. If they don't verify that, so the question would come, we'd get a complaint from a neighbor. Someone from the township would call the Herons and they would have to verify through receipts and other ways that 50% of the revenue was actually wine produced on site. And the hook here is that failure to verify this condition if you request from township with a two-business day shall be a violation of the conditional use permit. So this would be an easy one to verify. We would make a request. If we didn't hear back in 48 hours, it's a violation. So we don't have to be on site. We don't have to do it ourselves. This is something the applicant has to provide to us. Number four, the wine tasting room shall meet the following additional conditions. So number four is one condition, but it has a lot of parts. So the first part of that, again, the condition is this is about the wine tasting room specifically. Maximum of 85 guests. That's substantially less than Misty Valley Misty Farm. The applicant has to record each event and the number of guests. They have to keep those records for 12 months and those records can be requested by the township. Music, regardless of application, may only be played in the wine tasting room and inaudible at the property line or within the property boundary of any receiving property. So no music outdoors under any circumstance. Amplified music will only be allowed indoors after the applicant demonstrates through a sound test to the township zoning administrator that indoor amplified music is inaudible at the nearest property. When sound demonstration shall be recorded, it will begin to be each season. Specific conditions related to music and sound are detailed in number six below. Music, radio, phonograph, tape, recorder, stereo, musical instrument, including live music or any sound amplification device shall be allowed outside. E of four, this is a big one. No weddings, wedding receptions, bridal showers, bachelor parties, bachelorette parties or graduation parties are permitted inside or outside of the wine tasting room. I know this is probably the biggest issue, of course, with Misty Valley Misty Farm. Letter F, no more than two events per week and not more than one event at a time. And there's some definition of what an event is. Letter G, hours of public operation. No events shall occur from November through March. And the hours of operation are noon to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. H through L are similar standards that were actually put in place for the most recent Misty Farm proposal. And that had to do with no candles, smoking, open flame, no sky lanterns. Slight modification in letter I, all wine tasting events shall be supervised by the venue coordinator. Venue coordinator shall be onsite at all times. If an event is in progress, contact information shall be provided to township. The owners of Heron Farm must reside on site. Nor the owner's operator shall be permitted. When and if the owner or operator changes hands, they have to be notified to the township. And then those new owners have, all these conditions have to be reviewed as part of this permit. Letter K of that, of this standard, all events, parking to be accommodated on site. So no on-street parking. I know that occasionally becomes an issue with Misty Valley Misty Farm. L, the township preserves the right to monitor the parking in terms of more parking is needed. So those are, those all have to do with the wine tasting room that's going to be in the barn specifically. Number five, inclusion of marketing activities or materials that are contrary to the conditions set forth under the permit constitute a violation of the conditional land use or grounds for suspension of the conditional use permit for 30 days if they occur two different, occur two different time within any one-year period. Township Board has authority to suspend the conditional use as noted above. So they have to do with what they're advertising on their website. If something, if they say they're advertising weddings, even if they say they're advertising. If they do a wedding, if they say they're advertising, that's a violation. And then we get into the sixth condition that has to do with music and sound conditions. The first one is again, kind of a somewhat repeat of some earlier ones. When amplified music is played after the sound test, it must be inside a sound installation room. With the doors and windows closed, it must be inaudible at the property line or within the property boundary of any receiving property. Letter B, this is subsections of that condition. Applicant at onsite permanently installed, permanently installed sound measurement system installed and continuously recorded, recording ambient sound as continuous audio file sound measurements at the nearest property. And the source of the sound, anytime there's music played, those recordings will be cut for a minimum of 60 days. The applicant must provide them to the township within 48 hours of being requested. So again, this is a situation where we recognize there's an issue with enforcing sound because unfortunately, sometimes when we get out to a site for a sound violation, the sound is gone, so it's hard to do. Then trying to address that condition has indicated they will keep the sound high on each event. They'll keep those recordings for 60 days. And the township can request them. If they, if we request a sound recording and they can't produce it, the next condition is more than two violations of sub-paragraph B, sort of the following sub-paragraph, which I'll mention in a second. They resolve the notification of the conditional use permit. Letter D, in the event the township requests sound measurement for two different event dates within one-year period, the applicant cannot provide them that capability. The amplified music must be removed from any conditional use permit in place at the time. So this isn't even talking about if they violate, if it's audible. This is if they can't provide the recording two times, they involve the ability to have and any other factors. It's further, sound violations occur after, if further sound violations occur after a rule and are music from the conditional use permit, the township shall hold public hearing to revoke the full conditional use permit presented in terms of this conditional use permit. Number seven, applicant to add additional buffers. This is buffering to some of the adjacent neighbors. And if it's determined that there's not enough screening, they'll have to add some at the request of township. Number eight, conditional use permit is contingent on the applicant's not splitting the parcel or reducing the parcel size. Number nine, applicant's authorized fireworks exempt from this permit. Number 10, applicant would have the ability to request up to two special events for a 12-month period exempt from these requirements pursuant to the township's event ordinance or through township approval if not within the scope of the events ordinance. This condition, I think Mr. DePestal questioned the events ordinance. We have it in events ordinance that has been forwarded to the township board. The township board has not approved that yet. So this condition may either have to go or be modified in some manner, unless the events ordinance is down. So I recognize that. We're kind of, we put that condition as kind of a little forward-thinking, like hoping that a township board adopts the amendment at some point in the future. Number 11, applicant may apply for a revision to the conditional use permit after 12 months under the following conditions. And there's a number of conditions. Many of them have to do, most of these have to do with performance. So they, if, so if this conditional use permit was approved, it's indicating that the applicant can amend the conditional use permit. Now, this isn't anything special to this. The applicant could do that anyway. You know, anybody that has a conditional use permit approved can come back to the township and request a new conditional use permit. In fact, if this condition wasn't here, someone could come back. If you had conditional use permit approved, you could come back next month and apply for another conditional use permit. So this condition is limiting any change of this conditional use permit for at least 12 months. And we have to remember that even an amendment to a conditional use permit is discretionary. There's no requirement for the township to approve. But there's some performance criteria that has to do with how the applicant is, you know, impacting neighbors and things like that. Number 12 is the section that I think Ms. Brand took exception with or someone took exception with. It had to do with disputes and arbitration. And maybe Mr. Heron can address this. I believe this was a condition that was worked out between the neighbors and you. This wasn't our condition. It was requested by a neighbor. It wasn't ours either. We're okay with it, but. Yeah, so this wasn't our condition. This was, one of the neighbors asked that there be some kind of arbitration. We don't, you know, this is unusual. I will admit this, it's an unusual condition, but it's something that was added at the request of one of the neighbors who lives near there. Then this is, you know, we have to recognize that this is a farm. Right to Farm Act has a pretty open, I'll say, definition of what's a farm. Pretty much if you are making money off of something you're doing on your property, whether it's selling grapes or selling animals or selling milk or whatever that happens to be, you likely have some protection under the Right to Farm Act. So this, number 13 simply recognizes that the applicant has whatever rights they might have under the Right to Farm. Fourteenth and last condition is that the terms of this conditional use permit intended to and shall be interpreted and shall be interpreted and implied to comply with the Religious Liberty and Institutional Persons Act. This condition was a request of the township attorney simply because we used the word wedding earlier in these conditions and he was concerned that wedding had a religious connotation. So we added number 14 at his request. And then the rest of the conditional use permit is the typical language that we have in a conditional use permit that talks about how a conditional use permit may be revoked by the township. So those are the conditions. Some of the planning commission has been part of these meetings, some of them have not. This is the first time we've seen them as a group. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you again and I guess it's time for some discussion.
Thank you very much. All right, so, and just a reminder that a conditional use does go with the land. And so I think there is that outstanding issue around the LLC versus the owner and how we define that. And I think the other items, you know, of concern are kind of linking it with the events ordinance and how do we, that events ordinance never gets put forth, you know, the wording there. And then the whole, the idea of enforcement, trying to build in as much measurable enforcement and a process as possible. But obviously, it's, I mean, it isn't, there isn't a perfect way. None of the township's enforcement's perfect, but have we done a good enough job? So I'll open it up for discussion.
So I think, just by way of explanation for everybody in those meetings with the neighbors, I think we tried to create a list of conditions to address concerns by the neighbors and concerns about experience with Misty Farm. So that's, I just wanted to say that so that it's abundantly clear what a violation is. And I, somebody brought up the Misty Farm issue. And I would say that about that we should consider this project until we do it with Misty Farm. The problem with Misty Farm is that the conditions have already been put in place, is I understand it. So we can't go back and change them, I guess. We could probably do better on our enforcement, but in other words, they have conditions, like they get 200 people. We've tried to reduce that amount of people in this project to 85. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to touch on that because I believe one of the callers brought that up. I'm concerned about enforcement. I think it's our weakest link. And I'm concerned about the growing. We had, I participated in about three meetings with neighbors and conditions seem to be growing from the neighbor's perspective. And at some point, you know, the process is going to be done. I just wanted to say that because I've received several emails about continuing concerns. The other thing I want to mention is this condition number seven about the arbitrator and negotiations between the neighbors and the Herons. I'm surprised to see this in here. I thought we talked about it ad nauseam in our meetings with the neighbors and the Herons. And I would not like, I expressed then, and I'll say it again on the record tonight, this body nor the board of trustees can advocate their role over this process. And that is a conditional land use. So I would not be in favor of any arbitration language, like I said in the meetings. And I thought we had understanding of that, but now I'm seeing them show up in condition number 12. If you could go off and negotiate your own deal, you wouldn't need us today. You just go negotiate your own deal. That's unfortunately not how it works. This is part of the ordinance. This is a governmental unit and we cannot advocate our role. So that's why we put in provisions about violation, provisions about revocation. Provisions, I mean, we have provisions, as Doug mentioned earlier, provisions for, to relook at things. So I for one am not in favor of that. And I expressed that, I mean, we talked about this for quite a while. So like I said, I was surprised to see number 12 put back in. But maybe that was Doug's way of trying to engender some more conversation about it. But I would not be in favor of that. I think that sets up, not only does it put the owners on the neighbors, we cannot advocate our role as a planning commission, let alone a board of trustees. We cannot have laws and say, hey, go at it, neighbors and Herons. That's not how it works. You know? So I, the last thing I want to say is I would like to acknowledge the work that Chairperson Colberson has done. I've been, as you know, very concerned about the enforcement. I've been, as you know, very concerned about the enforcement piece. And until we could get that in place, I couldn't understand how we can go further. But there's been a lot of work even before, I was invited to some meetings, folks were meeting. Like Mr. DePesco said, there's, the herrons and the neighbors have put a lot of work into this. I think there's been a really good faith effort and I think the township has been a good faith effort to try to see where we can come to some consensus on it. But I don't think we can consensus our way out of our role as a governmental body. So that I can agree to. And then just, this is the enforcement piece I am still concerned about. I think it is Lucy-Loosie. But I would say to those listening and those here today, we don't really have control over that as a planning commission. We've tried to make as much, we've put a lot of responsibility on the herrons for responding to our concerns about noise and events and all this. We've done a lot and these conditions are a reflection of that. But at the end of the day, enforcement is going to come from the township and the planning commission doesn't have the authority to do that. We are not the enforcers. So we talked about that in the meetings and it's hard for me to speak to, to the enforcement piece other than to say I'm concerned about it too, like some of the, some of the neighbors are.
Other than tiny fish shirts.
One question is probably for the herrons. Just as Mr. Lamont was going through the list, I just jotted down some notes. So one of the first ones I wrote down, it says that wine tasting room must have at least 50% of the avenue of the sales onsite. What, what else is going to be sold there that?
It would be like some sandwich wraps or t-shirts, things like that. But it's all going to be pretty much related to wine sales.
Okay. So would there be like caterings or anything onsite when you have these same events?
I think it's unlikely that that would occur. I, I don't know. I mean, like the 50%, it's, it's sort of hard for us to overcome that, that it's a big hurdle in front of us. Like if we had a caterer come in, the sales from that, would, it'd be hard to match that in line.
Yeah.
That's a big, I mean, that's one thing that, I, I mean, if 50% of sales had to come from wine produced onsite, then, I mean, that's a, a real restriction, you know, what could happen. Yeah.
And then how would you handle if you do happen to exceed 85 combined guests onsite? So you're wildly successful, which I hope you are, but how would you handle that situation?
I mean, yeah. Probably like any other business who runs a capacity, if you're over capacity, you're going to have to shut the bar down and get the number down if that does occur.
Well, and I mean, the second, if it was an event, then it would most likely be on an Evite type, like, or, you know, we, you'd have to sign up for it. So if it's sold out, it's sold out, you know? We'd have to have that type of a, it'd probably be online from that point. So I mean, yeah.
Let's see, notes. When you're talking about any type of revisions to the conditional use permit after 12 months, that's, I'm assuming after 2025, not now, they, they wouldn't be able to make any revisions until they actually opened the wine?
We could clarify that.
Okay. I just want to make sure if it's after 2025.
Right now is the conditions say it says 12 months.
Yeah, so the one thing that we could, we could change, we could update that.
Yeah, we could say after zone, final zoning compliance is issued or something.
Okay. Yeah, that goes with the question, right?
So I have a question for the neighbors, those in the room and otherwise. There are a lot of conditions being met here in terms of the sound amplification, it not being audible at the boundary line, at the property line, the recording device, records are going to be kept. And I was there last year personally, but I mean, we had the tour and I don't remember hearing a lot of noise at the boundary line. So, and then, and that music was playing from, from the outside and this is all being played inside and nothing being allowed outside, no recorders, nothing of that sort. So how is it that we're hearing again and again and again that the noise will be heard? Is something wrong with the analysis the herrons are providing or something wrong in the receiving end? Because I'm unable to understand this after such a long process. I mean, this is becoming quite crazy and insane in my opinion. There is a sound engineer, technology was being used, it was not you said, I said. I heard it myself, I couldn't hear anything. And the music was, was being played outside and here they're saying inside.
And they're saying inaudible.
And inaudible and this and that. So what exactly are we asking the herrons to produce now? Some kind of futuristic technology to curb the noise? I think everything is reasonable here.
I think it's.
Where is the noise coming from is my question. I'm being crazy for this. Each time I come to the meeting, we talk the same thing again and again. The neighbors talk the same thing, the herrons talk the same thing, we talk the same thing. And we keep doing the circles and circles and circles. So prove it to me.
Why? Was that directed to me? Do you want me to respond to that?
All the neighbors or all the believers who believe that noise been heard?
So I think the issue is the current conditions are acceptable. I think the prior ones were not. Okay? And I don't think it's necessarily about the conditions as they're listed. I think it's about enforcement.
Enforcement, okay. So we have passed that point. So you believe that the noise will not, is not audible at your premises. Do we agree on that point personally?
No, I, I think that's an older conversation around the sound testing that is no longer relevant because that was around decibel readings. It's now inaudible, which I think is substantially better. So there's no issue with that.
There's no issue with that at all?
There's no issue with that.
Okay.
It's truly audible and that can be enforced, that's definitely a good thing. Again, as long as it can be enforced. So when I call the sheriff, what's the sheriff going to do? Is he going to say, yeah, I can hear it, but you're not breaking the law? Or can I record that conversation and use that as evidence? This is what I need to know.
So would we say clearly that they will keep records of this and if there are two violations, then we shut them down? So is that not sufficient?
It sounds sufficient on paper. However, if they don't keep the records, do you know if they have records?
If it's a violation, they don't keep it.
Right, but how are you going to know whether or not they actually have them? Right? What are they going to have?
If they don't produce it, that means they're a violation.
Sure, they're going to produce a document says there's no complaints.
No, no, they have to produce a recording from that device, which I never have seen, by the way. And I don't know how it operates used.
I agree.
And, but that's not the point. I'm not trying to be sound engineer. It's not my interest now or in the future to be once. But I'm saying if this device does work, then they have the records. If they don't have the records, then they're violation.
So does the, does the device work, I think is a sound question.
Now that's the next question. Does the device work?
We, we retain sound engineers to help us through this process. So as a part of the final permit issuance, there's going to be a sound test. I presume the recording device will be tested at that point as well.
And a demo provided?
Absolutely.
Exactly. So we're then, at that point perhaps, to see if this, whether the paper, like this device example, works or not works, is that, is that, is that the barrier here to moving forward or backwards to accepting or not rejecting because?
Yeah, but I think that, I think that's, I'm, I'm seeing a couple, just a couple things. And I think one, and with all due respect to the sheriff, I think that we found that the sheriff is, you know, they may not be available, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think the sheriff department can be relied on for enforcement. And I think part of that has been, I, you know, it, it doesn't seem, because if there is another event that is something more stringent or more critical, I guess, you know, I don't think we can actually rely on the sheriff for this monitoring. So, so we have monitoring of the, of the noise. And if there isn't a recording produced, that's a violation. There is monitoring of the numbers and if that documentation isn't produced, it's a violation. We have monitoring of the dollars and if that isn't produced, that's a, a, a violation. So those are the, plus we have the issue of no more than 85, I mean, just the idea of 85 people versus 200 or 250 or 400 people on two sites, you know, the scale is, is very, very different, plus not the same kind of events. So I guess, I, I think laid out, that's where we are with the enforcement. And if there's, I, I do, I do want to hear also, because I thought number 12, the arbitration wasn't going to be part of it either.
I agree. I thought Jim Fink said it or moved that.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. So the other thing that, you know, I think the only thing that we could possibly do to increase the enforcement would be to have some sort of, you, you talked about the sound test at the beginning of each season, which I don't interpret that as being the engineered sound test. I have that, I guess, you know, a, or is it an engineered sound test?
It can be just the audible, I can't hear it, I can hear it.
Crank it on.
Very pragmatic.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to disparage the herrons in any way about this process. I think the reason why this is taking as long as it has is has major implications. And I think there's some like 26 residents that surround the property that are opposed to this. At the last planning commission meeting, the only people that were in favor of this was one of their neighbors who they rent a house to and other vineyards. Having said that, I respect their ability to do what they want to do on their land as long as it doesn't impede upon the neighbors. And that's why it's being thoughtfully scripted so that we can get this right.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the other issue that I have is can we resolve the, the LLC ownership resident piece?
I'm just going to have to go ahead. I mentioned that, and DePesto emailed that yesterday or something, I don't know. Earlier, late last week or something, I just don't know.
Yeah, and control whether or not he does an S corp or a corporation or LLC.
No, we can't.
Outside of our purview.
But how do we ensure that, you know, if, if it gets sold, they're just, is it a member of the LLC, the owner that, go ahead, Brian, you hit on.
Our attorney didn't opine on this, but we did ask him and it does say in J, the owners, owners of Heron Farms must reside onsite. It doesn't say an owner of Heron. So it's very specific, the owners of Heron Farms must reside onsite. So I'm sure you'll get that from Jim. The owners reside onsite, so, but I mean, I'm sure you can get his feedback on that.
They're all owners?
Well, if they had a partner, what does it matter if they, a partner lives on the property, but the herrons live on the property? I mean, what, what's our, what's our purpose here? Why are we trying to control that?
If you had a minor, I, I guess the idea would be that an owner is going to oversee it.
And to take a step back.
Yeah, go ahead.
Take a step back for the whole purpose of this part of the ordinance is it's supposed to be, this is supposed to be providing income opportunities to people who are farming or doing, and so we don't want this income opportunity to be a landlord who lives in Armington.
Right.
So it's supposed to be people who live there, so.
And in actuality, most farms are LLCs or there's some sort of.
So we would be, so if we just said language that the owners have to live on the property, that would get in what we're trying to do?
I think so, but you know, I, I forwarded that question to Jim Fink after I backed in.
All right. And then the other thing is I don't think that is this whole events ordinance. So that's the other thing I wanted to clarify is this has, okay, there's the Fourth of July and then two other events. And somehow I think it should all be one wording so that the Fourth of July counts as one of the events or, you know, we could say three of, I see you just wincing, but you know, if we wanted to say three events and they have to be approved by the township or condition, you know, meet the conditions of the events ordinance so that, yeah, because I don't know if the events ordinance is ever going to pass.
Language in number 10, I think we just didn't carry it into nine. For some reason it says through township approval, if not within the scope of the events ordinance.
And, okay, so the question is, is that two or is that three? I mean, the way it's represented here, it's really three.
It's the two plus one.
Yeah, is, is really three. Is that, I'm just.
That's what we were hoping for, yeah.
You're hoping for three.
Yes. So it would be like Fourth of July harvest something and then planting or some other little kind of celebration.
Two actual events and then our Fourth of July party.
Yeah, go ahead.
A little quick questions. For E said no getting receptions, showers, bachelor party, graduation parties. A regular party, is that allowed? Like I host a party for 25 people, is that allowed? Yes, that's allowed. So, okay. Okay, okay. Come on, I can catch that. And as a new business, section four I, yeah, venue coordinator will be there always. As new business, can you, would that, I mean, would that something?
It's her.
Okay.
Is that in number five?
Number four I.
Oh, four I.
Yeah. I was wondering, because the venue coordinator has to not only provide the drinks, try to maintain the decibels and try to make sure that the sound management system is working, battery there operating and all that kind of stuff, right? Plus, some people, yeah, don't open the door and let the music play. I mean, a lot of things. I think.
Plus be nice.
Yeah, yeah, plus get new glasses, whatever. It's a hundred things. A small business, new business, sometimes can't afford all this, a lot of hats. And that person I think is going to do a lot of the things I just described, taking care of the neighbors and the guests.
Don't say anymore, she'll quit.
Perspective, that's, that's a very important point because if that person can't do it, then there will be some of the problems we just discussed. I mean, they can emerge at least.
It's a business, it's the cost of doing business.
So that's a.
I just wanted to say one other thing. I thought of this, love this later and I was talking to Jan and Doug, and I just want to say that despite the fact that you can reapply and change conditions and amend conditions, I see the 85 person limit as the ability to narrow the big event kind of thing, getting out of control. And so, I mean, it's, you're well within your right to petition the county township to do, you know, to ask for a larger, but I'm just speaking for myself. I see that as a very important one and is part of all these conditions. So I don't want to make, I don't want to, because we've talked, in our discussions, we've talked a lot about trying this and trying that and see how it works and, you know, or once you have a record for being okay with 85, then we expand it to 150 or whatever. But I'm just, in my view, I'm not promising anything about expansion because you're in a neighborhood, yes, it's a busy road, but you're still in a neighborhood, a rural neighborhood where people are right across the street, right behind you, to the side of you, et cetera. So I just wanted to say that because I'm not sure that I made that clear in any of my remarks during the meetings.
Thank you. All right, so, Commission.
Just, just following up on it, it sounds like we have, so we have a total of three special events for 12 months. Will the neighbors be notified? One is July 4th, but what about the other two that's in that 12-month period? Oh, we notify the neighbors?
Actually, yeah, just, it, it, they have, it has to be approved by the township or through the events ordinance, which is an application.
Where is that language?
I was looking at number 10.
It's nine and 10. So we were combining nine and 10 into just 10 of the three special events per 12-month period.
Oh, I see. So there's two others other than the one special event of July. two others other than the one special event of July fourth.
And fireworks always has to be specially permitted, so that would be in addition to the, if there was a special events ordinance, or they'd have to be approved.
Yeah, I don't know why they put that in there, because it kind of, this is why we're having to discuss it, because it shouldn't even be in here, because this is part of the conditional land use. We're just acknowledging that we've, that it isn't. But I guess it's to try to explain further, but it seems to me.
So if you did three, it would be, and then anytime you do fireworks, you have to have a, there's a special application for it anyway?
Yeah, this would be no different than, so, assuming there was a special events ordinance, any property in agriculture that is owned land can apply for special events. So this is maintain, this is, this is different than a tasting. This is, this is a right that anybody in agriculture that is owned land, or any property, residential also, would have the right to apply to set a township for an event. And so this is just kind of recognizing that that right is still available to the Herons, if that's what we want to get. I think we have to do that. So that right's still available to the Herons. And if they got appropriate approval from the township, whatever that looks like, they could do this outside of the wine tasting. This has nothing to do with wine tasting. Because what would happen is, they could do an event approved by the township, and we could get complaints from neighbors saying this isn't part of the conditional land use.
I see.
And so we just want to make sure that, well, I think that's what the parents want as well.
So you're just putting, you believe it's important, just to clarify that whole piece that you just said?
Yeah, and I, I've got Mark here to kind of consolidate and fix that up, and of course, this begs the question to, again, try and move along with the events ordinance at the township. Yeah, because isn't that in the proposal ordinance, isn't there a limitation of how many you can have per year? That's the thing, otherwise you're coming to the board every week, great, I want this, I want that. I think that was initial discussion. I'm not opposed to the language that's in there, I just don't know what the event ordinance looks like. That's it.
Yeah, and, exactly, and we don't know what it'll look like when it gets finished either. Yeah.
Maybe we'll see every weekend, I don't know.
We're having events without the ordinance, so that's.
You have to have an advocate, you have to approve those, I have to have approval, but anyway, okay. Well, what this says is that if there isn't an ordinance, they still have to get approval from the township for those three events. So there's notification, that kind of thing, and then otherwise it's subject to the events ordinance. So, because we don't want them just to be able to have events, right? All right, so, Planning Commission, we have an action table, deny, approve with. Let's change it, yes, yes, go ahead.
So, Ms. Brandt brought up something about what's the rush, now, I, there's really not a rush, as Mr. Heron brought up, this has been going on for a couple of years. However, that being said, there seems to be a few tweaks that the Planning Commission is talking about tonight. So I don't think it would be, and it seems like we're moving in the right direction. It would seem that I could make a couple of these minor changes, bring it back to Planning Commission, have you guys take a look at it one more time before putting, pushing it down to the Township Board, and that, that's what I would suggest, that we, that we kind of take one more crack at this thing and get it right where it's supposed to be before, because otherwise, if, if you were to conditionally approve this, then I've got to make these changes and then somehow explain to the Township Board what happened between Planning Commission and Township Board.
Okay, that's good, so then we'll, then entertain a motion to table and
To table.
And so allow the planner to take into account the items that we discussed, and then also get a, we should, and, and also with that tabling motion, I'd like to hear that a copy gets distributed to the Herons and to the neighbors ahead of the next meeting. So is there, who wants to make that motion, or a motion, sorry?
I moved the table, the Heron Farms project, and that the, a copy of the conditions be distributed to neighbors and the Herons before our next meeting.
There's support? Or?
What does it exactly mean, though? I'm, I'm not clear what will happen.
Oh, so the idea is, because the language has to be very precise, and it actually has to go through the attorney, if any kind of changes, that they're going to look at combining that and kind of limiting it while, you know, all those little things, coming back for one more review, but also going out to the Herons and the neighbors prior to our meeting.
Can I clarify, what Commissioner Moore means by the neighbors, maybe the neighbors who've been involved in the committee?
In the committee?
Yes. So, yeah.
All right.
Because you, I think you indicated that, that you think it's going to be a few months or so to.
I sent him the question about the LLC.
And, and basically, we need that approval from him. Okay, so, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chen?
Yes.
Commissioner Culver?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, and, Mr. DePascual? Thank you.
Trying to be reasonable, honestly, I am, and just clarification of my.
No more emails, Mr. DePascual.
Sorry, I'm, it's, it's a matter of fact, I was actually out of town the last week, traveling for, for vacation, I tried to tune out of the email.
You're on your vacation sending those emails?
I know, I know, I tried not to, but it's also been, as Brian said, a two-year ordeal, and I want a resolution on this as well.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you very much, and thank you also to the Herons. All right. We are moving on to our next agenda item, which is the the Morrison Hills private road. And why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, again, sign in, and give us updates?
Perfect, good evening, Commissioner. Open this up, Doug, if I raise my hand, can you give me control?
Yes, there you are. All right, you're, you're in, just give it a minute.
My name's Tom Culver, I'm with Midwestern Consulting, and I'm here tonight with Greg Kopp from MAVD and Classic Properties. And as my computer opens here, we'll like to talk to you about the Morrison Hills Court, private road, it's class B private road. Off of Morrison.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, a link that goes to the three parts.
So a little bit of location and context for where Morrison Hills Court is. We are off of Morrison Road, which you can see here, which comes off of Dexter Ann Arbor Road, we're to the east of the city of Dexter. We share kind of a northeastern boundary with Huron River. You heard some folks here tonight speaking about Heron Farms, they were from this Bridgewood Hills subdivision to our southwest. We have a rail line that is to our north, again Morrison Hills to the south. We're proposing a simple class B private roadway, because of the number of lots that we anticipate serving with this, this roadway, it would be a class B road, however, we are building components of it to class A standards by paving the road and doing some other unique things that allow us to preserve natural features at the site. We do intend to submit for land divisions, six land divisions, sevens would be allowed with a site of this size. But it, it, the intent and the plans that you see would show the six land divisions that we would look towards having approved in the future. Specifically with regard to the site, we have completed a lot of topographic mapping there. There is an existing home that sits kind of off of Morrison Road here with a driveway that comes to Morrison Road, crosses a gully. There is a little bit of a red dash line here that you'll see that is a wetland area, so there's some natural features associated with the site. Given that we're next to the Huron River, there are, there are some natural features associated with that, one being wetlands, we have wetlands that are adjacent to the rail, adjacent to the Huron River, and then there's a valley that runs kind of parallel with Morrison Road that also has some wetlands associated with it. There is a, generally speaking, gosh, I want to say about a thirty to forty-foot bluff from the river to the plateau of the site, where we plan to build the private road and the homes and the lots. The site does have a number of landmark trees, you can see the critical root zones shown here in the green. And there is a pipeline that runs along the north side of the site, kind of parallel to the railroad tracks, that is also associated with the site. In graphic view, this is what the proposal looks like, again, it's a class B private road, about eight hundred feet long. We plan to pave it, it'll end, it'll start at Morrison Road with a couple A-cell, D-cell lanes, we've submitted to the county, the county is has our plans permit ready, so we do have some administrative things to submit, such as who the contractor will be that builds the road, the insurance that they have, and those kinds of things. But they have agreed to our entrance there, one of the other things this adds to Morrison Road is a turnaround for health safety trucks, fire trucks can use this as a key turnaround now further down on Morrison Road. That is a benefit to those that reside on Morrison Road. The, in gray here are the six building envelopes that we anticipate for the six eventual land divisions, and how they are served by the Morrison Hills Court. We had the opportunity with this project to be a little creative in that we work with staff, we have a number of stakeholder meetings to get together and talk about how we could look at preserving the natural features on this site to the, the best extent we can, and limit our footprint of impacts, grading, tree removals, those kinds of things. So one of the things we came up to propose, and I think this was well received in a number of the stakeholders' meetings, we have a couple of different road cross-sections for this project. We have a cross-section from Morrison here, the county road, into the site and up the hill, through the valley, up the hill, where we're proposing a, basically, twenty-three-foot wide roadway from back of curb to back of curb. So we've narrowed it up, we've taken out the ditches and everything, proposing the curb so we can narrow the road, and then when we come onto the site, we have a reverse curve. We're using centerline radius of a hundred and seventy-five feet, that's a little less than what used to be the standard at two hundred and thirty feet, but still consistent with county standards and so on, so that we can come in the site, on the valley, stay with a contour, and then come up the hill and reverse curve. At the top of the plateau is where we switch from a section that has curb and gutter to a ditch section, we're asking the ditch to play two roles, those two roles are for drainage and stormwater, volume control, detention and infiltration, we do have good soils that will infiltrate stormwater, so I'm going to talk about how that helps us from a site impacts perspective, but we have two road sections here, a curb and gutter road section and a ditch section. I want to kind of zoom in here, but this, this is a picture of Morrison Hills Court with a lot of information shown on it. It shows the trees, the little gray dots, the contours, the site boundaries, the lot lines, and then it begins to show what our limits of impact are for this private court, and that's the area that's here in orange. So I'm going to zoom in a little bit here. So we enter off of Morrison Hills, the curb and gutter section, along with a cobbled slope, really allow us to come into the site, turn, be really narrow and tight along that contour, get up to the plateau, where we then have the opportunity, when we get kind of in this area, to kind of widen things out, have our infiltration ditches and our stormwater management, so we're collecting water up there, putting it into the infiltration area, and that's you know, percolating, saturating into the infiltratable soils, and then that allows us to really limit our limits of impact to this orange area as you look at the site. We're using that existing driveway here, because it's already where they crossed, so there's already elevation there, so we're only increasing that minimal amount to keep with the road widths that are required for access and so on. We are impacting some trees at the site, of the protected trees at the site, so the ordinance says that you can remove up to twenty percent of the protected trees at the site, and we're not at that limit with what we're proposing at our site, we're about seventy-five percent of that twenty percent of protected trees at the site, with how we've laid this out. So we're about seventy-five percent of the twenty percent that we're allowed to remove without mitigation of protected trees. We are impacting a number of landmark trees, however, and what that means is that we need to mitigate those landmark trees. So one of the things we looked at is, how could we use those mitigation trees to enhance what's already there? So we looked at three different ways to do that. There, at the top of the plateau between the neighboring properties, there, there aren't a great number of trees, you can stand there at the on the Bridgewood Hills site and see over kind of through the site. So we want to create a buffer with those mitigation trees, so you'll see here, we've added some here between existing trees, and then kind of wrapped them all the way around the property line, so essentially our goal was to create a buffer and definition between the lots and the homes and so on. Then the second thing we wanted to do is we wanted to add trees along the roadway to give their definition to where we have our infiltration basins and kind of a streetscape as you're coming in the, into the, into the private road. And then the third thing we wanted to do is, you'll notice there are existing trees along and between the, the various properties, we wanted to give these two lots that opportunity to, to have a tree boundary between them, to kind of reestablish that in, in this particular instance. So, again, we're utilizing the existing drive crossing of the wetland here. We're minimizing impacts, because we're, we're using that centerline radius, we're using that narrow road. We're reversing the curve with that hundred and seventy-five-foot centerline, and then we're widening, widening out and asking our stormwater and our, or I'm sorry, asking our ditches to do two things, be ditches and address the stormwater and infiltration where we can, providing the turnaround for safety and fire trucks and folks that access the drive. Not again, we have had review by, a couple of reviews by Carlisle Workman, we've had a couple of reviews by OHM. That's why I worked before you tonight, we do have, through those reviews, some minor edits to make to the plans that we would, you know, anticipate making those edits or changes, in fact, I can tell you with some of the comments that Carlisle Workman had, they were questioning some trees being close to our limits of impact, and we think there's five trees that we had provided to be removed and mitigated for, that we can actually preserve. So with that, there's five more trees that we think we can preserve based on that review, and we want to update the plans before we go to the board with that. We are in process with the state for our wetland permitting. We've submitted every, you know, we've submitted all the information, we're anticipating having a meeting and moving that permit forward. We are, as I said, with the Wasna County Road Commission permit ready, only need administrative items to be submitted. Only need administrative items to be submitted to be able to build our entrance from Morrison. And then with Washtenaw County Water Resources, we have technical approval. And you probably have a copy, technical approval, and they don't have jurisdiction per se. Meaning, we meet all their technical requirements, including infiltration of the stormwater at our site, and they're approving of the plan. So our goal here tonight is to discuss this project with you, answer any questions that you may have, and then respectfully request from you a recommendation to move along to the board for the approval of Morrison Hills Court.
Private road.
Private road.
The only thing that's...
Yeah.
Do you want to leave that on the screen?
Yep.
So this is a private road request. This is a relatively simple, in the big scheme of development review, a private road is probably one of the simplest. And then what they're proposing through land divisions is not even approved in front of the planning commission or the land division partners. It will be reviewed and approved administratively between my office and the accessory's office. So truly, what we're really looking at tonight is a private road. There are three kinds of private roads in the township, and they have to do with the length of the road and the number of parcels served. Class A roads are 1,000 feet or longer and serve over, and/or serve 10 or more parcels. Class B roads are under 1,000 feet in length and serve up to 10 or, you know, nine or less, actually between nine and five parcels. Class C roads are, again, under 1,000 feet and provide access to four parcels or less. The reason why we have different classes is they, they're a different cross-section. What I mean by that is the width of the road and the type of road that it has to be. Class C road is our most minimal type of road. I would tell you that's sort of a chloro-type driveway. It's a 16-foot white gravel drive. Access four parcels. Class B, we're getting into a situation that is more of a dedicated road like you see driving in a county road. Class A is essentially the same cross-section as a county road. So Class B, the only difference between Class A and Class B is that the road can be a little more narrow. Class B roads can also be changed if a fish can be trapped. If they have a head desire, but in case of a project, we pay. But they're proposing a Class B private road. So as you go, if you've gone through our reviews to July 19th, 2022, the biggest issue that we have with the private road, there's two issues with private road. One is the issue of trees in our natural resources section, starting on page three. So because the overall parcel is greater than five acres, the applicant has to conform to the township's wooden provisions. So that being said, black and white provision of that ordinance indicates that the applicant has to a full tree survey on the entire site. The applicant may request of the planning commission, so it's going to be really up to the planning commission, if you are willing to accept a estimate of trees, and this is within the areas that aren't impacted by what the applicant is proposing to do. In the area that they are proposing to build this road, they did provide a tree survey showing all trees declared. But there are other parts of the site that they have provided some estimates. So they've taken some sample areas and sort of extrapolated that across the entire site. Correct? That's basically it. That's correct. And use that number, that extrapolated number that went across the entire site to determine the 20%. And so why that's important is that a property owner that has five acres or more can clear up to 20% of the protected trees and any non-protected tree with no penalty, with no tree replacement penalty. If you go over 20% of the protected trees, there is a replacement calculation. And if you, any landmark tree, even a single landmark tree, there is a replacement. So as was mentioned by Mr. Kovar, they're estimating, you know, based on this extrapolated number across the entire site, that they are less, that they are impacting less than 20% of the protected trees. And they are proposing to replace, of course, any landmark tree that's being removed. And that we do have a handle on because they're obviously showing those in the area of the road disruption. So our issue here is that the planning commission has to be comfortable with this estimate. And perhaps when I'm done here, Mr. Kovar can explain a little bit more about how that was done. If you're not comfortable with that estimate, you could request a full tree survey on the entire site. This is a discretionary, this is one of those discretionary items that the planning commission has the ability to, yeah, we understand, they just understand both that we're good, otherwise we could request a full tree survey. Now, the other issue we raised in the natural features section is the wetland impact. And as the applicant mentioned, there's a wetland impact for road. You'll have to cross a bit of a wetland. And they will not only have to apply to the state of Michigan, but they'll have to apply to site and township. Because this is a private road, that approval will occur in the township board. If this was a site plan, we'd be kind of reviewing the wetland along with the site plan. But it's technically not a site plan, this is just a private road review. So any, if this project was to be recommended for approval from the planning commission, that should be a condition of approval, that a wetland permit be applied for and approved, you know, prior to approval, prior to construction. And if for some reason that wetland permit is not approved, then because it's a condition of approval, they would not have approval. Because it's a condition, they don't make the condition, they don't get approval. So I think that's a valid condition. And then we also require a private maintenance agreement. And we mentioned here that typically that maintenance agreement is reviewed by the township attorney as a part of the township board review of the private road. So that would also be a condition of any kind of approval. But then, of course, we mentioned in our review, if you read through our review, that I think Mr. DePastel alluded to this, that, you know, if you look at an area photograph, it certainly would appear that less trees would be disturbed if one of the existing tree, one of the existing roads in Bridgewood Hills was extended into the site with cul-de-sac, rather than trying to come up from... Little side court. Yeah.
Morrison Road.
Absolutely. Rather than coming up from Morrison Road. And it was explained, because we raised that comment in our first review as well, and it was explained by the applicant that they do not believe that's possible due to current ownership and the fact that it's a private drive. And they would now need some permissions from homeowners association. They're probably likely to get those permissions from the homeowners association to do that. But we still point that out, that that would be an option. That might preserve some additional trees. That ship may have already sailed, maybe it was never impossible to, you know, for that to happen. But we raised that again, as a natural way to preserve additional trees on the state. So I guess the road itself is pretty, this is a pretty black and white kind of review that the planning commission does. I mean, it meets it or it doesn't. It's a private road. We're not talking, there's no, this is not special land use, this is not a PUD. This is not a lot of discretion that the township has with a private road. If they meet the ordinance, we have to approve it. However, the one discretion here that we do have is with the tree survey on the entire site. And then, of course, the conditions with regard to wetlands and the condition with regard to private maintenance agreement, if this project was to go forward. Now, I assume we have...
Somebody with OHM.
That's right, those are my comments. And when OHM has done it, we have to answer, try to answer any question that the planning commission might have.
And if the applicant could just prepare to go into the tree day.
I'm trying to find, oh, there's Sally, okay. Sorry, Sally. I see you. She just raised her hands to help me find her. I've just promoted Sally to panelists, so that'll take a moment. There you go, Sally. Thank you, awesome.
Good evening, everyone. As Tom mentioned, we did recommend our approval in our July 12th letter. We did have a couple of minor comments. So we will be requesting the applicant to submit another set of plans so we can verify these before BOT, before Board of Trustees' approval is given. But we had a few minor comments on stormwater, mostly just clarification and calculation corrections, a couple of minor things to do with that, a couple of minor things to do with the legal descriptions. It didn't look like they quite closed. Again, minor housekeeping cleanup. And then our comment about the private road maintenance agreement that was submitted after this letter was issued. So that is in review right now, and we will be providing a separate memo for the Board of Trustees to review there. But none of our comments should greatly affect the layout or the private road length or anything like that. So mostly minor. We are going to be, like I said, requesting a resubmital just to verify that these have been addressed before the Board of Trustees. But at this point, we recommended the private road for planning commission approval.
Thank you. So Tom, did you want to kind of go through the tree count?
Absolutely. And this may be a little bit of new information for Doug too. But initially, we had gone out and completed a tree survey of an area that we had anticipated for the private road going through the site. Then we met with staff, we talked about what we were doing with trees and everything. And we decided that the best practice in this case would be to take the tree survey out to basically the extents of the wetlands or the slope that goes down to the Huron River. So we expanded the tree survey area to be what you see in that outer blue line. So the areas that we didn't conduct actual, you know, ID tagging of the tree is in this area over here in the wetland and along the slope that's already protected with a 100-foot buffer from the Huron River. And then down and out here, kind of further, as we parallel the Huron River for some of that property. So those weren't actually boots on the ground located with survey equipment trees. But we did expand the area to understand the trees better. Then what we did is we looked at the different types of areas that are treed at the site, and we took a sampling. So we took half-acre samplings of trees that existed in the three different tree areas, let's call it, and estimated the DVH. And we also took basal area readings, if you're familiar with what that is. It basically gives you the amount of lumber, something a forester would use, at the basal area of the trees, of the stump, if you cut it down at, you know, brush height. So we did that, we did these samplings, and then we applied that to the areas that are beyond where we plan to build, like in the wetlands, in the pipeline easement, on the slope, based on the characteristics that were exhibited in the samples, and estimated the tree removal total for the full 23 acres. So onsite, as this project moves forward, for the private road, we know exactly what trees we're impacting. For the buildable areas of the lots in the future for the land divisions, we have a tree survey of those as well.
Yeah, so what's left of the, is the riparian slope basically at the wetlands, which are...
Correct.
Green survey areas. 14. Okay. Any questions from...
I have a question for Doug. Just looking at your memo on page four, where you talk about the possibility of extending the existing hillside court, private drive. So my understanding is that this isn't about drainage and all this stuff. This is about, we have an existing road in the bridge, what is it, the Bridgewood Hills? That the homeowners of the Bridgewood Hills don't want them to piggyback off of that and create a road off of that existing road that wouldn't go over wetlands, that we wouldn't have to get rid of trees. Because these homeowners in the Bridgewood Hills, Mr. DePastels, don't want that to happen. And I'm just trying to understand, where's the collaboration? I mean, what, why is this beneficial to the community? To tear down more trees, create another road, go across the woodlands? I mean, that's antithetical to what we're talking about in these meetings. I'm not directing that at you personally, I'm just, I just feel like it needs to be said. We spend a lot of time talking about drainage and stuff, and that's really not really what's going on here. So for that reason, I would not, I'm not going to approve it. I think there could be some collaboration with this homeowners' association for the betterment of the community. This just sounds... I don't know what it is. You know, maybe there's some good reasons, maybe the homeowners' association has some really good reasons why they want more trees cut down and go over the wetlands.
Yeah.
So if I can just, again, I'm great cop with MABV, and we developed that property as well. So that's what we talked about initially. It's a private road. We don't have the ability to connect to that unilaterally. Those lots are all sold and owned.
So the homeowners' association of Bridgewood Hills told you they would not collaborate with you and piggybacking off of their existing road?
Yes, specifically the...
I'm asking you a question.
Right, and I'm trying to answer.
Okay.
So the two that we specifically talked to initially are the two that have bought the property because we were worried about how this was impacting them because they had bought at the end of the cul-de-sac. And they were strongly, both strongly against connecting off a hillside. So we talked to the larger homeowners' association.
And what would that impact, then negatively?
Well, because they had purchased a home at the end of a cul-de-sac was their feeling. So that they liked the fact that they were at the end of the road and there wouldn't be traffic going by their home. And so what they didn't like about going off of hillside is now they're not at the end of the cul-de-sac. And they might not have purchased that property had they known that it wouldn't be at the end of a cul-de-sac. And so we showed them this alternate layout, and they liked this a lot more. They liked the fact that we're developing it as opposed to selling it to somebody else to develop it. But they don't like the idea of extending it so that they're no longer at the end of a cul-de-sac, and they wouldn't support that.
Thank you. So I'll just make a comment. I would not be in favor of this, cutting down more trees, going across a woodland. I mean, I just trying to get my head around it. You know, I attended the meeting, I don't remember when, with Doug, when we talked to you guys about this, and we tried to suggest you to go another route. But I get it, going up against this neighborhood homeowners' association group, you know, their concerns and wishes and stuff. I'm just...
All right. Would you discuss the impact on the wetland that you're crossing?
So there is, at the intersection, or almost the intersection of our project, there's an existing driveway that enters to an existing home that's going to be raised. They filled in, part of the driveway, it's filled in, there's a culvert. So, you know, stormwater that comes through the valley goes through the culvert. There's a wetland associated with the bottom of that. We have to increase the size of that crossing, called the driveway crossing that exists, so that we can build our roadway there to meet the standards. We're anticipating... We're anticipating that the impacts are very minimal currently. We're not sure that we are, we're going to be, gosh, I don't even know if they use these terms anymore, but almost like a permit by application, because we're not incre, we're not cre, we're not impacting, you know, more than 10,000 cubic feet. We're very minimal in our impact area here. So not even certain that mitigation would be required or anything at that, that point for the minimum impact. But we're basically, if you can imagine, the drive sits here, the gully's here, there's rating up to the drive, we're basically taking that and widening it here. We're planning to, we're going to have stormwater from the top of the hill, the other side of the gully that comes down our road in our curb and gutter roadway, and it's going to enter into a mechanical swirl chamber for, that's not a technical term, but a mechanical device that spins the water and gets rid of the sediments and so on, and then gets released into that drainage way.
So any other questions?
The mitigation to the landmark trees, is that 50%? Are you mitigating 50%? Or how much, how many trees are you planting in place of the landmark?
So with what we're proposing here is we're proposing to plant 97 trees. Of the 97 trees, we are planting some three-inch tree, three-inch cow herb trees, and we're planting some two and a half, and we're also planting some pine trees, which are judged by height, as I recall. So with that, that addresses the inches that we're impacting in the landmark trees. So when you say are, am I, are we impacting, I think it's one and a half inches. For every inch of landmark tree, I think it's one and a half inches, but I can pull that up and show you.
So you're meeting the landmarks.
Correct.
But not exceeding. Any questions, Rakesh?
So I think the, I want to, I want to say just the, yeah, we need Doug. Yep. I think Doug, a question, a legal question, if they don't have access through the development, and that isn't an option, I mean.
What, we, we can't make them, you know, we can't, you know, people have private property rights, and we can't make them, you know, it's not even a public road, you can, in theory, do condemnation if it was a public road to extend a public road, but this is a private road, so we don't even have that, I don't think it is possible. However, you know, I think we have to be satisfied that we hear, well, we hear from Mr. DePascal who lives there, we hear from the applicant that they made these discussions. Are we satisfied with that answer, that they made a good faith effort to actually look at an alternative? So that's up to the planning commission.
And I guess I would make the comment that, given that this is the alternative to that, I do want to say that adding the infiltration, I think where you place the trees makes a lot of sense. I would want to make sure that the maintenance agreement for the road included the infiltration of the inches, make sure that that was specifically. So, and I, I want to say that I think it's, you know, looking at the aerials and so forth, I'm okay with the estimate, just because it's, it's not close to the 20%. And let's take some more. Trees replaced? But I guess we're ready for, I don't know what other folks are thinking as far as a motion.
I'm supportive also, so I can make a motion.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay, I will suggest a motion here. Based on the information received, the applicant affected the agreement, the planning commission provides that the plan meets the standards contained in the private road for, therefore recommends the township board to approve private road from Morrison Hills. Approval is conditioned by the following, concerns noted in the township planners review dated, I don't have that here, I mean, or do I have the township engineers?
We'll get that if you, yeah.
And then, while we're looking up those dates, I believe we also have the conditions that the wetland would be reviewed and approved before construction. And the private road maintenance agreement would also include infiltration of the stormwater. Are there any other?
Yeah, and the maintenance, and the wetland? You said the wetland, okay. Yeah, and the date, the township date stamp is June 29th for Carlisle Wortman?
No, it's actually, our, our.
Is it your date?
July, July 19th is our view.
I have a, I have a, and, oh, sorry, yep, July 19th, sorry. And OHM is July, uh.
12.
I was looking at the received dates.
12 for OHM and 2019 township planners.
Is there a support? Did you want to support, Rakesh?
Yeah.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Sharma. Further discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm uncomfortable with not seeing the tree survey.
You want a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Culverton?
Yes.
Thank you, and it'll be going on to the township board.
Thank you.
After the minutes, let's get approved. And so I would like to propose that we jump to the approval of minutes, because Commissioner Sharma needs to go, so we jump to the minutes at this meeting. I have a motion to that effect.
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Chan, supported by Commissioner Sharma. July 11th. I did not find it. Now, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Moved by Commissioner Chan and supported by Commissioner Sharma.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? In favor, oh, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Yes, and the minutes are approved and drafted. Any highlights for the report?
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn, so, and good luck on your exam.
Oh, yeah, good luck on your exam.
Yeah, okay.
I couldn't take it today. I'm procrastinating it every day of the week.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, supported by Commissioner Sharma. All those in favor, please say, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 9:01.
Go home, change, have dinner. What example do you fill?
It's just a company exam. I think so many.